Mike.
Here, Rick here.
John.
Here.
Sarah.
Here.
What's your weakness?
Posthumity to the flag, United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the routine and justice for all.
Any other motion for the consent agenda?
Uh, we need to move five D to five K and move all the, the rest of them just kind of up.
Okay, I got a second. Motion to call in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll probably give you the time, place for discussion. Time and place for discussion items not already on the agenda, timed at a three minutes each. Bucket presentation, historical preservation. Louie Anne should be on?
Yes, she is.
Hi, Anne.
Hi, Anne.
Hello, I think Becky's on too. Uh, but you have our budget worksheet, there's not anything that's dramatically different um, from this year to next year, um, with the exception of additional money that we are requesting um, for some historic district signs to put on the lamples downtown.
Okay, anybody have any questions for Anne? Pretty easy, thank you, Anne.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, please, fire me.
Thank you, Council, I sent uh, everybody a, a letter, uh, kind of explaining where we're at with the, the budget process. Um, we recently increased the pay, I don't know if you've been following the news in the media, but for law enforcement pay packages across the state of Iowa. Um, it's kind of unprecedented times for what pay packages are going for for law enforcement and recruitment retention, we're constantly being hired or attempted to be recruited to bigger departments. A lot of lateral transfers with five to ten thousand dollar sign-on bonuses and everything else, so. It's a very highly competitive market right now and with recent changes and everything else to the, to the career path for that. We took the uh, measure of increasing the pay for anybody who, on our department that was not at the top patrol three rate, um, which would have been Jeff, Amy and Jason Blanks. We bumped them up to a patrol three and then we took Emily who's got one year on and bumped her up to a pay two. So we moved, moved them up one pay grade as a truly honestly a stopgap measure to try and close some of that gap right now with what we can do in contract parameters. As we continue to discuss, we're gonna be opening up discussions on, uh, obviously the contract will be up for negotiation, but really taking a deep dive into current pay package for our department so that we can remain competitive. What we found was when we look at recent studies, we range anywhere from below the twenty-fifth percentile up to the top of our pay rate was about the seventy-fifth percentile. So, um, quite a drastic change in some of those, obviously our lower ends need to get adjusted up significantly. But even the top ends in that seventy-fifth percentile, we may be able to do a little bit of moving there to, to retain the people we have and be competitive in the market as we go. So, those discussions are ongoing, which is kind of the main, obviously as you guys are fully aware of, the, the number one draw on the police budget is the people you have, so, um, salaries and wages. So that'll be the most impact. Uh, we're very closely with Brandon and Chris Nospe, the city administrator of Mount Vernon, kind of walking through, um, where we currently sit with the budget plan, um, with what we had proposed last time. We're very confident that we can stay at that three forty for one more year, um, depending on this last, this, this next discussion that goes on. So, I want to, you know, preface that with, we may come back with some adjustments, but, um, we'll have the police advisory board and everybody involved in those discussions. We'll keep you prepped up on that portion of it, but everything else seems to be in place that, um, we can absorb up and, and that three forty should cover for one more year. Everything else is kind of detailed out there, obviously if you have questions or anything like that, happy to entertain those.
Emily, Emily's only, you're only patrol two?
She's patrol two at this point, she's only got one, she just reached her one year of service. So what I've traditionally done when we hire somebody, especially new officers we send to the academy, once they complete the police academy training and then their field training, um, within the department, I bump them up to the patrol two rate. So, they go to a patrol one right after, at a years' mark anyway, and then, so we bumped her up. Generally you wouldn't hit patrol two until three years of service. So, bumped her up to patrol two, which is the same thing I did with Jason when we hired him and the same thing we did with Morgan Mayler before, we brought him in to the department as a certified officer. So because he was already certified, we started him at patrol two as well. So it's, it's consistent across that, but.
You bump up to patrol three after five years?
Yep, five years by contract, but, you know, we'll, we'll continue to assess that, we could do it earlier too.
How many, how many officers do you got?
We have eight full-time counting me, so.
Eight full.
Yep, we have two part-time, I kept, uh, Morgan and Rob Kelly on part-time, uh, once they left for other employment. Just because they're certified, they already know our, our methods, we use them for different events and stuff like that, so. Truly what we've been able to do so far with everything we've had, um, through the, you know, service, the combined service and what we've been able to accomplish, sauerkraut days, for example, uh, we covered sauerkraut days, we did not build a sauerkraut days committee for our wages, um, or any recovery from that, so. Uh, the football games, the wrestling game, wrestling meets, different things like that, we're covering those, working with the schools, identifying what needs they have from that standpoint. Uh, I think we worked two extra cut here dances at the school, had an officer present for the junior high dances. Uh, we've done turtle club, career day, uh, expanded the dare program into the junior high program, which is ongoing right now. Um, so you've got fifth, this year we did fifth, sixth and seventh in Lisbon, working on seventh grade right now for the dare program, so. A lot of time and energy and, and definitely looking for opportunities, whatever we can do to interact. We just did the cocoa with the cops, so we're already talking about, um, jumping in with something like the reading club and kind of at the library, different things like that, ways to involve officers with different activities going on, so.
Questions for Doug?
Have you done anything to familiarize your officers with Southeastland Community Center?
So actually this year we also, um, signed up over Thanksgiving, so we put it out to the entire department to sign up if they wanted to, um, to go over there and volunteer, you know, work on duty time, go there and, and volunteer their time, helping with some of that, so we, we were interacting through there as well.
Any questions?
I do not have any.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, fire at the M.A., that all one, Braden?
Uh, we'll do it individually, Brad couldn't be here tonight, he's the secretary treasurer to present this, so I'm doing it in his place. He put this together, so kind of bear with me, he had a couple of questions on some things, so. Really it's, um, as you can see, um, the current budget's a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, seven eighty, but just remember fifty thousand of that was added as a part of a budget amendment because we got the AFG grant for bunker gear, so you have to show that as an expenditure and a revenue. So, uh, this year's amount is, uh, fifty less than that one twenty-nine number, to give you a ballpark. So we're right on, right on track, actually compared to twenty-twenty-one, we're probably down a little bit, but. If there's any, any questions, most of this, almost all of this, other than a couple line items, is the stuff that comes in and out, fuel, um, repairs, uh, legal expenses, all that, insurance, uh, all that stuff, so. I'm open for any questions if you have any for fire.
Any questions for?
Do we put any capital outlay in for future vehicles?
That'll be later on.
Different budget?
Yep.
And, have you learned anything from your grant for the?
Pumper?
Yeah.
No, it'll be.
They, there's not a, I didn't know what the, my voice was.
It was, it's actually due, um, the twenty-first.
Oh, and so the due date happens in the same year?
Put it in and then they'll take a month.
Okay, I was just wondering when the due date was, I didn't realize that the due date wasn't here yet.
So with your, your, your radios that you have, you'd be counting?
Yeah.
Do you guys get on that, like the police used to get on, uh, what's it called, maintenance agreement?
So as of right now, they just renegotiated with Raycom, so, other than things that break, you know, like wear and tear, um, all that stuff is covered. However, I will say, um, the sheriff made known at the last E nine-one-one board meeting that in a couple of years, they're gonna have to learn, they're gonna have to figure out some ways to cut funds. And if these radios ever go into life, uh, according to him, it's gonna be responsibility of the cities to, to replace. We have probably thirty portable radios and seven mobiles, and there are five to six thousand of these, so. I'm hoping that doesn't come to fruition, but, um, but as of right now, every, every radio we have is covered under the maintenance contract, just like yours was for police.
Any other questions? M.A.
Uh, this again is pretty status quo, um, from years past. Uh, we also put a little bit of money aside for, uh, the siren, which if you look, this sheet here by the way, is the, uh, treasurer's report, so as we go along and talk about the account numbers, I'll try to spell them out. You can kind of see the fund balance for that and this goes into, so fund fifty-one, in their numerical order, about a fifth of the way down. You can see we got thirty-two thousand set aside right now, and that would be for a new siren when we decide to expand growth in whichever direction. Right now, somewhere around seats of faith church and be needed, so. That's pretty much it.
Any questions for him?
I don't think so.
Should, should you give your handoff since you're here?
I thought you, he just showed up, so if you wanna do that, that'd be good.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
In case he gets a call.
Well, luckily I'm not on tonight, so. Got that pretty well covered, so, do you guys want me up?
Sure.
Sure.
So, um, you guys can kind of see our, our budget proposal that was done, um, with the help of Brandon there. Uh, not a lot's changed from last year, uh, there was a modification in the salary accounting for a potential raise, depending on the performance evaluation, cost of living, things like that. Otherwise, um, there was some changes for levy for benefits as well, is that correct?
Yeah, so, um, you'll see the, the drop in salaries and wages. The reason that is because when we decided to put them on, or him on as a full-time employee, we had already budgeted and certified the budget with the employee benefits, so we couldn't levy the benefits. So this year we can, so we included them into a salary for this year, last year, FY twenty-two, that we're currently in. But this next year, we can now levy those benefits, so that's gonna be on a different, again, a different budget. So that why that's, that's why that number's less. Also, keep in mind, the ambulance service pays the entire wage of this salary. So, this is shown as a revenue as well. So, we only pay twenty-eight percent of his IFRS, health insurance, FICA, Medicare. So, everything else is shown, you gotta show it as an expenditure, but we show it as a revenue coming back in, all the twenty-eight percent of that total fund.
Yeah, so every quarter we get a, an invoice and, and kind of check to the city to, to make up for that difference.
It's very similar to how we do Joe Johnson the other way. We, we get invoiced and send them, that eleven thousand we talked about last time, that's what that's like.
Yeah, I'd say I've been really happy with how that's been going, so I appreciate, you know, you guys keeping track on that and getting the invoices in, so, it's been good.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Jake.
Water for, water.
Okay, if you go to your white page here, this will be, uh, all the accounts, uh, six hundred through six oh five.
Travis, grab this, thanks for the mic here.
Pretty much. Brandon and I went through this trying to cut everywhere we possibly could. I don't think, the notes will tell, minus the, the DPS, that should go, for the permit notes on the second page, undermined equipment, the GPS should be in purchase this year. You guys have any questions about any of these numbers? Repair and maintenance went up quite a lot, correct?
Our, our vehicle.
I'm looking at this, no, proposed.
Vehicle repair?
No, it's total repair and maintenance utilities, it's showing twenty-seven thousand and a requested, if I'm reading this correctly, it's thirty-eight five.
Right, but that's got the electric and gas in there that's gone up. So Mike, if you go over two columns, you see actually year-to-date.
Yeah.
Go down to the bottom, we're already at twenty-two, three seventeen. What's that? So, we kind of split the difference in.
I think we have to all realize that prices aren't the same what they used to be, everything has gone up in price, regardless of what it is, so, I think supply and demand is definitely, uh, hurting everyone right now, so. We have to realize that those, the cost of gas, the cost of everything has gone up, so, let's just keep that in mind as we're reviewing these.
If you look at the electrical and gas, just for instance, we budgeted fifteen thousand, we're already over eleven, and that's nothing that we can control early. So, we had to move that to twenty thousand, so right there's nine thousand of that increase, just in that alone.
And you got the three other accounts there that are already past their budget?
Correct.
For the year. Four.
And then, one thing I'll mention too, Travis, just to remind, if you flip over to the second page of the capital outlay. Remember as a part of the budget amendment, we were gonna possibly use some of the, uh, American Rescue Funds that we received, a hundred and sixty-four thousand for the water and sewer, potentially out at the sports complex, that's half of it, so sewer's gonna show the other half of that, one sixty-four. So, it's shown in as a revenue, uh, so if you look on those accounts, we already add that money into our bank, it'll just be an outlay, that's, and if we choose to do that next year, we'll have to wait to see what the, what the quotes come in out there at the park, if we need to do that for the next year to cover it, we, we still have another hundred and sixty-four thousand coming in, so. Any questions? All right, let's go through. Just so you know, the rest of these pages, those are, like that back page, that's gonna be the bond payment, uh, which is paid through, uh, water revenues. So, we'll see that on the next, the bond principal interest, the bond fees, that's what I did, that's for debt service.
All right. Kind of the same thing here, I mean, gas and electric, we're gonna try to keep the same, this didn't increase. We have a little more control over the way that the electric gets used at sewer plant, uh, basically how we run our pumps, whether it's twenty-four, seven, or if we run them in phases, and. So I think we've got that to be beneficial for everybody. The sludge spiral screen, we've been talking about for five years at least, back on here again. Uh, the money we had marked for this year, we ended up having that sample go down, that we haven't purchased yet, but we're gonna end up having to, so that's the money we're gonna use for that.
What, where's that at, Travis?
That is under.
One thing too, um, if you look here on the revenue, this one does include the revenues, because I wanted to show you guys here. Our revenues are three twenty-six, seven hundred, and if you flip to the back page here, our expenditures are three fifty-four, nine sixty-six. So, we're a little less than thirty thousand shy, so we're digging into our account, which if you look, there's two hundred and eleven thousand in our account. I did talk to Maggie from Spear Financial, who does our, um, debt service and our TIF and helps us with all that stuff. She does have forecasted, um, an increase in sewer this year, not water. And she also wants to make mention that we have three bonds that are coming out of sewer right now. So, one of them is, is the last year for it, and it's a big one, it's eighty thousand, so, um, we'll get that paid off and then we'll sit, be sitting a lot easier, and they, like I said, we're gonna have to.
This next year will be the last year for?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three, okay.
So. Just, just so you know, it's, we're trying to look to do what we can here, but I think with, if, if one thing that, um, that's a positive, if you look in our charges for service on this front page here, um, year-to-date, we're at one seventy-four. So, this is exactly, as we go through these budgets, this is almost fifty percent, so if you double that number, that's approximately where we're, where we're gonna be. That would put us at about three forty-eight, if my math is right. Um, you see, I only budgeted three twenty-five, and the only reason I did that was because we've never been to that number before. So I just want to make sure that we're not overshooting, so, um, just so as you go through here and look at that, that's kind of where we're getting our, our numbers and such, so.
Our revenues are supposed to be at a hundred and ten percent to qualify for the SRF loans.
Correct.
Now, under operations supplies, they got with that permit note is AquaFix. If you remember, I talked a while back ago, a few months ago, about, uh, the fog problem we have down there, the fats and greases and oils that are getting dumped down sewers. That's is, uh, this is something new that, uh, we've never had to address, um, we've never had the problem that we're having. So, that's why it's really important, when I tell people that we shouldn't be dumping greases down the, because this is basically, I mean, we're, we got twelve thousand budgeted for it, and basically all we're doing is dumping this down the drain to try to combat what people should be taking care of in the house, so. That's, that's what that is right there.
And we've already spent thirteen thousand this year?
Right, but we also with that thirteen was other, other testing stuff we had to do to figure out what our notice should be and that, so. Brandon and I are, I'm hoping we can stay at that twelve.
There's also one batch, it was four thousand dollar worth of meters that came out of there that should be taken out of the line above, which we're gonna, we're gonna fix, so. It's a little bit better than what it looks.
How much did the AquaFix amount to, thirteen, Jake?
Uh, no, it's, right now it's at thirteen, minus four, so nine, roughly, so we got eight and a half.
Usually two payments, about forty-five hundred.
Okay.
Ish, yeah, a year. Obviously it's based on the need.
And then the other big expenditures, you know, the sludge hauling, which is a minimum of fifteen thousand in the spring and fifteen in the fall, um, depending on how many gallons of sludge we have to, to go, so. We, I assume the biggest culprits are restaurants on the? Oh, yeah. It's just. Pride and sin? Yeah, it's, yeah, it's individuals. Yeah, I think.
Most restaurants have a, a grease, a grease trap that they can throw theirs and have picked up, so.
But I know you cook.
Very good.
Huh?
Very good, Tim.
Yeah, who, you want to add now, or what? I just was assuming that, that that would be where the bulk of this stuff is coming, we, I mean, we have four or five people. Are we, I wonder if the, I mean, I've never ever done it personally, but I wonder if people even realize that they're causing such a concern, an expense, if they're dumping it in the toilet at home, you know?
And we've been, we've been talking about this for six months.
Yeah, we've been talking about fog for.
Yeah.
Recently, we also talked about the flushable waste being a problem.
Yeah.
That still is a.
I mean, there's, these last four years probably, I mean, that, that part of the industry has just changed dramatically with the amount of problems we've had for stuff we never thought we would live. Have we ever put it on the water bill reminding people? No. Did you?
Yeah, and I, we can probably share it again, I'm pretty sure we, at one point I think you shared a video with us that you'd found about the flushable waste, and we've shared that on our Facebook, but we could probably do it again.
I was saying.
This is a friendly reminder.
I want a statement on the fog too.
Yeah.
Right on the bill, if we told them, do not.
Yeah.
Do this. You know, if they realize that they're paying for it, you know? Might go a long way. Any other questions, sure?
Any last big questions?
Those remaining pages are the, uh, same thing, bonds, you see, hundred and eleven thousand.
You said eighty of that was funded?
Uh, yes.
And that's got two more used?
Just the, the next two years.
Twenty-three is the last.
Twenty-two, we'll do it at the end of the year, and then twenty-three is the end of the year, so.
All right, sewer, roads.
This one looks really good because, uh, the highway thirty, I just sent this one, so.
That's really pleasing.
Yep, but, uh, um, that's what that one point one is for this year. Majority of that was for the highway thirty, which we're hoping we can get done. Now. Street, street maintenance and supplies is pretty much the salt we put on in the wintertime and the paint we put on in the summertime, that's what those two are coming out of. Do you get your salt from the state? Yeah. Bring in the cement a little bit of that. Yep. Now, minor equipment went from forty-eight down to five, um, that's because we purchased our new sprayer this year and, uh, the chipper, so. So we don't have any other big ticket items on the budget. I have a question on streets. Yep. Highway one, or where, our Washington Street, does, does the state get involved in that at all since they don't traffic all the time, overweight traffic to us all the time on our street? The only thing that, uh, so, we, we talked about this when thirty was going on, and the only thing we can do is put a weight embargo on, but there's nothing, I mean, there's nothing that the state's gonna do there.
I mean, we, we took pictures and stuff, like on Washington Street, off the right cemetery and stuff, we took pictures of that, and shortest thing they see, so what, you know?
I mean, they did patch a couple spots by the dump in Bud Road where they rolled off, but. Yeah, no, I just wanted, because this is kitten, where it eats.
It's part of the project.
The water main, yeah, we had to get the water main in there first. Yeah, but I meant, it's, but the state is creating a lot of that. We're not running a whole lot of overweight trucks on it.
By shutting down one and saying.
That's also a farm-to-market road, so we have gotten funds that way. That we didn't have to come up with. So from the road from Main Street to the highway thirty, is that ever gonna be repaired, or? So, Dave and I, I think you even talked about it, accounts too, our, our big push is to get the water main in first, and then there's different processes that we can try on, or, but yes, I mean, obviously we would love to get thirty resurfaced or if not. No, not thirty. Not thirty, but Washington.
So that's part of that, remember last time, Dave and I was put into that grant for two point two million through Lynn County? That's part of that waterline project, which would include, um, in the end, fixing the roadway. But it's gonna, it's gonna be used for the water infrastructure, and then we can use the money we have allocated for the, uh, the road. And also, yes, we'll talk about tonight, that, uh, the grant with the. Uh, and also, yes, we'll talk about tonight, that, uh, the grant with the, I think, um, survey. We'll talk about that later, too, with that off, which is...
So, what is our legal enforcement on that? I don't mean to belabor that, but, label that, but let's just say we've got an over, you know? They come down through here, the semis come down through there all the time. Um, if, can we put a weight limit on it and stop them?
Well, what if they're delivering to Lloyd's?
Well, I think you're gonna...
I mean, a lot of them deliver to Lloyd's.
We're gonna have to really look to see what, how's that gonna affect our, our revenues that we get. Remember, our, our, uh, road use tax is what covers this budget. So, you don't wanna, you gotta, you gotta figure that out.
Fred, you don't wanna play Big Brother, or something?
You, you don't wanna, if you ban... You don't wanna end up less, less off than you were, you know what I'm saying, you still gotta crap the road. So, I mean...
I understand, yeah.
If it stops funding coming in, that means you can't have funds go out either, so... But we can, I can certainly look at it.
I'm just wondering, because if, and I understand that funds coming in, funds going out, but if the, if the damage to the street over a period of five years is way more than the funds coming in, so who's in the battle?
Right. I can look at that and see how they break that out.
Are you, I, I guess I'm questioning the, your question, because are you, like, questioning the semis that maybe are delivering to Lloyd's Table Company? Or semis that are delivering inside of Lisbon, that need to get into Lisbon?
Whole-fledged grain hauler come through here with all of that weight, uh, or...
Because if, if you're, if you're just a...
No, we can't, we can't stop a semi from coming through business, you know?
Oh, absolutely, but if you're gonna stop somebody that is, that has this amount, amount of grain, and this semi that weighs the same amount, how are you gonna determine, "You can't come in, but you can"?
What, what Mike's talking about is like, when they load a semi at McMartell and they cut through Lisbon to get over to the bypass to get to Clinton, for it.
Yeah.
Okay, I, I get what you're saying, I, but that's still, like, it's all about...
And there are those trucks that go down to Highway One and, uh, stop at the top of the hill there.
Yeah. There's a lot of trucks that, I don't blame them, honestly.
I don't blame them either, but I'm looking at the, the tack, the, the paying for it, the taxes for citizens. That, that's, you know, I just...
I mean, North, North Washington's always been our trouble spot, and hopefully, when we do the water main project and everything, we'll, we'll be putting into specs that it can handle something, or anything like that.
That would be the goal.
Dave, do you have any input on this?
No, I think you guys are discussing this similar to what we've talked about in the past, that our options are to try to pursue this funding through Lynn County, which we put the application in for, and then also try to seek some farm-to-market road use funds, since it does qualify for those, that would have to be distributed through the county. And just continue to work on those two avenues. I don't know that there's really much other opportunity besides that. Um, Travis and I have talked about trying to do some things there that would not be as expensive as a full replacement, get us by for a while, uh, which would include pinning the joints and then doing an overlay after we mill that level. So, we have some options, we're just looking at trying to maximize funds based on how the grant opportunities turn out.
Thank you, Dave.
All right, are we done with the roads?
I'm done.
We did, if you go to the second page... Um... Under heavy equipment or vehicle outlay, um, we put twenty-five thousand there, it hasn't been done in quite a while. I think the twenty-eight thousand was for the, the new pickup. But this would be for, set aside for future one-ton dump truck. I think, uh, there's one in there, it's an O eight, so... In your best estimate, Travis, how long is the dump truck gonna last, yeah? Our, the white one?
Well, the one on, I would say, you know?
Well...
What, then, a year? Well, first, you're there. I mean, I know you wanna get a good deal on that, I mean, so...
I got, uh, estimated replacement is, uh, twenty, twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine?
And that's, I think that's gonna be, that's gonna be pushing it.
Are you, are you, okay, let me put, now let me put this one, are you looking to buy brand-new, or if you can find another good deal?
My hope is, I'm gonna call the town that traded this in and ask them, 'cause, and obviously, they trade every ten years. So, when he gets close to their ten-year mark, I'm gonna see if they would be interested in working an agreement out that way. 'Cause that had sixteen thousand, I think, on, and we got it?
Yeah, something like that.
So, and right now, we've got twenty, twenty-three and a half, so, um, it is a, it is a very critical piece of machinery for snow.
And did we, did we pay the land on Highway Thirty, that shit?
No, we did not.
So, did that, did you figure, figure out if you're paying the mortgage bill?
Yeah, I mean, actually, when we ordered that paint...
When?
Yeah.
Not ordered though?
Yeah.
So, that paint's already been ordered and...
Correct. Well, it hadn't been paid for, it's been ordered, so... And basically, we went with the best, 'cause we won't, technically, if we redo it, we won't have to repaint it.
No, yeah.
They'll have it, so...
We did make one pass go down...
The other line.
The other line, so it was reflective, and, you know, you could see it. So, there wasn't asked me to get us by, we thought if we're gonna tear it up, there was no sense with the window paint.
Do you need anything to maintain the shoulders during the summertime?
Uh, we had, we had a contractor mow it this year.
Yeah.
Um, and that, uh, on, what's this line, I don't know, street maintenance? Yep. Seven hundred and seventy-five, yes. Yeah, as part of the street, the street maintenance. I was gonna see if that was your guys' opinion, was to have them, it was right around fourteen hundred, I think, is what it came into. And we had the contractor mow the ditches.
The hills, the hills.
Did you just have, did Dave just...
That's what I'm just going down.
Yeah.
I think it's a great idea.
That's so cheap.
I, I, I would have almost liked to see it twice. Um, I mean, if, you know, I mean, so, I mean, you know, I don't, I don't, what do you got, budget, fifteen hundred and...
Well, this also includes cracked ceiling and...
But, I mean, I'd almost like to see that done twice, and, you know, I mean, we could, we could buy the stuff to do it ourselves, but what we spend, it takes us twenty years to recover it.
Yeah. That's actually a pretty inexpensive feat to do all, I mean, that's a lot of work.
Does it get up a lot of trees?
Yes, you do.
Maybe I'd almost like to see it done twice a year. I think if you keep up on it, 'cause that hadn't been done, and...
And it, it makes it...
Maybe once a year will be enough.
I think when he goes up there, you know, he can, now, instead of diving in the unknown, now he knows he's been there, he knows what's there, and it's more of a mowing versus, I mean, he was getting trees and all kinds of stuff out of there last time, so...
He's not entering a jungle anymore, he's entering...
I don't know, but, but, 'cause when on the one versus two, when did, he did that in, like, September-ish?
Yeah, I know, it was, I think it was August.
It was like a September.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't know, I don't know how, you know, if he did it in June, if he would, that would be good enough for both ends, and...
I think what we've thought about is maybe doing the shoulders, like a, a pass on each shoulder, and then do the actual...
Whole thing.
The whole thing once, but we can, we can mess with that.
I mean, and it does make a big difference for line of sight.
Oh, yeah.
You don't see the gear, you can see those coming...
Yeah.
...by the earth easier.
I can.
Like heaven. Anybody got anything else, Mark?
I don't.
All right, let's go to solid waste.
All right. So, on here, you can see our expenditures are around, uh, two twenty-five, eight ninety-six. Um, I do have some concern that this, this fund, um, we're gonna need to raise the garbage a little bit. I'll probably bring that up at a later meeting, but, um, if you go over on, look at six seventy on your white page there, um, we're sitting there at thirty-five thousand. Um, you can see our year-to-date. Uh, keep in mind, the, the chipper come out of here. So, we'll need to, uh, we need to deduct that, so it's not quite as bad, but we're sitting about one twenty-two. So, we're looking at around two forty as what we'll end up being. Um, so, I'm gonna look at that, we're probably gonna have to up. It's gonna be around thirty to fifty cents a week, uh, for garbage. So, it's not too terribly bad, but, um, that's gonna be something, I'll have to fine-tune the numbers and then get back to you on...
Is that with our new, with change in the garbage collection?
Uh, the contract's still in place, but, so there's no...
Okay.
So, we still have, we were talking about that today, I believe it's five or six years left on that contract. Um, so, we're sitting pretty good, but a few new companies are gonna honor the contract. Yeah, they're gonna honor that to the end of it, so...
Do they have a clause in there they can raise it for increased gas price?
I believe so, yeah.
If it keeps going up, but...
Yeah. Um, you'll see, though, on the back, I don't know if you have this back page, I'm sure you do. The revenues coming in are two oh seven, two hundred, and our expenditures are two twenty-five, eight ninety-six, so... That's, uh, that's where I get concerned with that, talent like that.
We, if you remember, Brandon wasn't here, so, when we were talking about this, we knew we were gonna be close. We had a cushion in solid waste, so when we set that price, we knew that we may have to adjust this, because we might be spending more out than what was coming in, so...
What would the impact of a fifty cent increase as a total be? Will that get us...
I figured that is around, that is around fifteen thousand. Is that what you're looking for?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I think budgetary-wise, that'd be around fifteen thousand, which would, so, for instance, on here, that would put us at about two thirty, two thirty-two. It'd be above that, two twenty-five.
Yeah.
So... Anything else on solid waste?
Who would be the John Paul Dooley yourself?
Equipment? Yeah, it's a truck. You have to buy all those canisters that have the scene.
Do you take the canisters?
I know that when he said it, when he came in here, he wanted to make sure it was ten years, so he could recoup the cost of those canister, canisters, so...
And we'd all be using that one day a week.
What's that?
Yeah, the equipment.
You'd have to buy a...
If it's on the, every day, it's gonna be you.
I don't know.
I'm just saying, because I, you know, they do it five, seven miles from us.
Right. But what's, what's the violation of...
Almost fifteen hundred, fifteen hundred.
You know, a little more.
One person does it every, every Tuesday.
Do you recycle, too?
No, John, there's some other, it has to recycle, Clarence does it all. And they take the recycling to death before they get paid for it.
That'd be something to think about, you know?
I guess the startup would be the biggest, you know, biggest thing, but talking about man-hours for one person, I mean, I don't know what it could, it could do this, I know it take, I know it takes four hours to do it, you kidding me? So, four or five hours.
You'd probably take double that, because we're...
Well, they're, I was gonna say, they're running two trucks, how many households?
How many households is there here?
Seven hundred now.
No, we have eight hundred and some meters, so actually...
We've got about five hundred. Maybe four or five hundred households.
It's about double what it is. I think it's close to that. I mean, 'cause each apartment has their own...
Container?
Yeah.
You have one truck?
Yep.
All I can tell you is when they started, they had really, really ratty trucks. They gave great service, but they were really junk trucks, and now they drive really, really nice trucks.
But that's also because it's a different contract.
Like you said, the startup would be a good chunk of change. Yeah, we just better leave it where it's at, too.
We can certainly, we can, we'll try to do it, I mean, I mean, but we're not, we're not doing it on...
Possibly do our own recycling, I mean, 'cause...
I mean, with what time, though?
Well, and that's just it, you have man-hours that you have to put in there, like, that's a whole nother ballgame, you have, you have, you have the...
We've taken on the brush, we've taken on the meters, we've taken on mowing and the stuff that we all use to contract out. And I guess I just, the only stuff that's getting pushed back is the, the stuff, the time we need to spend at the sewer plant, or exercising valves that need to be done, or taking, I mean, we only have so many hours of...
Oh, absolutely.
Obviously, it wouldn't be the same if you did that, you probably would not, you'd need more people, you know, to handle that.
Yeah, and that's another expense, 'cause now, yeah.
It, it certainly would be worth looking at, but my, my guess is, is that you're, you're not gonna come out ahead for much. I would guess our man-hour cost would be significantly higher than what the garbage haulers...
Did you just, did you get a loan for the truck and then for so many years, I don't know how to do it?
There you go. I'm just saying, do it out of that, buy another one. Like you said, the cost would probably be pretty much deep, you can do it, and if you don't have the man, people to do it.
Cancel more here, do it?
Uh?
Cancel more.
Do you know what?
Yeah, I'll do it. We're locked, we're, right now, we're locked in that contract, so, yeah.
But some of the...
I mean, we can do it, we can do it.
Any questions with that, solid waste?
General.
Well, this is really gonna bore you. So, if you start on, go to your, uh, treasurer's report, um, most of these are gonna be out of the oh oh one line. Um, contractual services, this is gonna be for, uh, we still get billed for the humane society trips. Even though the police are handling the call, we still get billed, because it's our entity. Next page is streetlights. Um, as you can see, we currently budgeted thirty thousand five twenty. We're at eighteen six oh five. Again, that's obviously the electric and gas, so I had to raise that to thirty-six hundred, or thirty-six thousand, excuse me. And you'll see the note there, that comes in from lost funds, that's the local watch and sales tax, which I'll talk about here a bit. Uh, streetlight generals, our account probably needs deleted, but pass that one for now. Um, you'll see the next page is cemetery, we talked about that last time. I did add, um, seventeen thousand for the GIS program, and we talked about that at the last meeting. That's that, uh, for locating all the stones.
Is that locating everything in town, too?
No, that's just, just, uh, just the cemetery. And, uh, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna use lost funds for that as well.
What the GIS fund, GIS, G I S...
What the GIS fund, GIS, GIS fund is, our program has is, it'll locate all the stones on the cemetery so you can block out there and fill them up.
Or plots, right, it will, it will locate...
She was supposed to check into that.
Okay.
Not just for stone, right?
Yeah, just, just, just a stone, it won't tell us, like, if we're going out to dig a pot, it won't, we won't have coordinates to go and dig it.
She's checking on this?
That's what I, yeah, that's what I added.
She's also, there's two different companies, she's sending a message out, and she's trying to pick the best one, and it sounds like most of the area is down to two. So...
It was pretty impressive, I came in the next day, and her and Marshall were both working on it already.
Awesome, well, we were told to by two of you.
So basically, so you punch your phone and...
Thank you, Christina.
He's not gonna answer, right?
Hopefully not. So, that was already discussed last time, but I just wanted to show that, just so you...
Thank you.
See that. Clerk Treasury, Financial Administration, um, nothing crazy there. We did add the part-time salary there for, uh, the increase of the hours for the new cleaning person, and those are the top. I did lower the salaries a bit there. Some of this was fine-tuning, uh, cause if you remember, there was multiple city administrators working in the past, and that's why that, those, uh, funds were hired. So, as you can see, this year we're at twenty-nine thousand, I put it at seventy, and we'll just have to adjust it and go with that. Any questions on that? Uh, planning and zoning. Uh, this will be a decrease, kind of back down to where we were, um, a few years ago. Uh, the last couple of years we've had for the, uh, comprehensive plan, which I talked to, uh, PCOT, and they're gonna have that wrapped up here in the next couple of weeks, so, uh, most of that fun money should come out of that. That fund should be paid out of there, and we won't need to budget for that next year. Uh, council, I updated a thousand dollars. Oh, not quite a thousand, it's eight hundred. Uh, just cause we're at sixty-nine for the year-to-date, so I updated a little bit. Elections, they always throw a little bit of money in there.
Do we have the lights appearing in twenty-three?
It's just there, you know, I know sometimes they have special elections, she's, I was always told to budget a little bit there for that. So it's like a thousand dollars. Attorney fees, legal fees, uh, you can see we're at twenty-five thousand, twenty-five thousand, but currently, uh, we're at five thousand. So if you double that, that's ten, so I think, uh, fifteen is a realistic number, and if you go back a couple of years, that's where we were, so I think that's a good, good gauge for that. City halls, next page. I did make the mistake on here, um, the janitorial expense, those are for supplies, not the wage, so that's why I lowered that number as a provision. But everything else is pretty straightforward. Kind of is what it is, right?
Is there anything here in there for repairs to the building?
There is, there's fourteen thousand. One thing I'm looking at is gonna have, and you see we got about eleven thousand and change left this year. I'm gonna look at these windows, cause I noticed that they...
Unbelievable.
They are leaking or something is happening, so I need to get that checked out.
I was in a meeting a couple of weeks ago upstairs. You had to speak louder than normal because it was whistling through those windows so badly. And I didn't even notice that it was windy outside when I came in, it was just a normal kind of wind. It was bad.
I didn't feel, if you double that fund, you know, you could say, hey, you need to lower it, but until I figure that out, I'm not, I don't feel comfortable doing that, so...
No, if they're, you know, if it's, some just caulk or whatever...
Right. I noticed down here, there's, during certain rains out of certain directions, it'll drip onto the floor, so...
If we ever had the windows tested, you'd see that airspace has been broken in between the two panes.
Christina's shaking her head yes.
So we've had a few of them repaired, it's just, uh, the company that initially installed them is no longer. So, finding people to come in, and then it's becoming even more of an issue now that we have the solar, because a lot of the work has to be done from the inside, and that's, it's making it difficult for any of them that are up above the solar part to get repaired.
And just know some areas in Cedar Rapids, uh, they ended up changing all the windows and some of those conduits. My sister-in-law's had forty-three buildings, and they said the windows were all damaged once they're sealed. Well, I can guarantee you that with the metal spacer in those windows, you don't have anything between the two panes anymore that you put in there originally.
Mary Ann just piped in and said that the window in the upstairs meeting room has an open gap along the edge, so, that'd be something to look at.
Anybody with the city hall paid off?
Anyone else? Um, yeah, we'll keep going through there. Liability insurance, that's, is what it is. Market's hard on some of this stuff with like health insurance and the different insurance policies, and their renewals are, don't coincide with the budget timing stuff, so it's kind of shooting darters at the wall, but, um, I've met with Scott, and we just kind of ballparked where some of this stuff is, so, there with us on that. Um, contractual services, uh, the big thing here, um, I did meet with YTT. If you go down to engineering expense, that is, uh, phase one of the sports complex. She thought approximately around thirty thousand would be needed, would be a good starting number for, uh, engineering expense for next year. We may have to adjust that as we go. Anything else there? Transfers out. This is gonna be for some of the, um, capital improvement transfers, which would be, uh, five hundred dollars for the library, uh, five hundred for EMA, fire up to twenty-five thousand, and parks at fifty thousand. And most of those are consistent, except I felt the need to raise fire just because trucks are going up, uh, significantly, and budgeting fifteen thousand a year, we'd never get there to buy a new truck, so, um, that's that. I think John, when we get to lost, he's gonna talk about the library, so, we'll off on that until later. Cable TV, these are actually revenues, that is just what we get for our franchise fees. Housing rehab, um, budgeted fifty thousand, and that's for the housing rehab project that we have. And you got the transfers showing, they're gonna show in and out on, on the emergency levy. And that is everything in general. Any questions with that?
Just briefly, if I could, housing rehab, we actually have monies available to rehab houses in Lisbon.
They'll get a grant, uh, through, uh, PCOT, and, uh, they meet the income requirements, they can file an application, and there's certain parameters. It's kind of their deal, they, they do the, basically...
Available.
Correct.
But is it only in certain parts of town?
Yes. It's gonna have a dedicated area. We just talked to him this year, uh, they're actually redoing how they're doing it, so it's kind of a, again, there again, it was kind of a ballpark of what we would need, but, um, they're changing their process of how they're doing things, so that's an unknown, but, um, most of the time, it's, uh, north of Market Street, uh, between Washington and, uh, Monroe, and then, um, they did expand it, um, this year because of, uh, lack of applications that way, and they found three more when they expanded it, so they're actually in the process of doing these now, so...
It'll be on target to spend all of the budgeting?
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be spent, yep. There, there was just the delay with the, the expansion and supply and demand and get people to do it, so...
Just to review, we pledge so much money, so if we get the grant, we...
Correct.
Put in our money. And each homeowner that qualifies gets up to twenty-five thousand plus eleven, they, and anything over that, they have to pay.
Correct. Employee benefits, um, this again is what it is, you'll notice there's so many sheets, it's because each, uh, category has its own taken out. Only thing you'll see, the police one, is we don't have to pay for that, that comes from Alberta, so that's one reason why, um, it may look like on paper, the police services had increased, well, you haven't factored in the employee benefits, which we were taking out of when we had to pay when they were here, so... I don't know if you have any questions on any of that, it's just, it's all raised based on, on, uh, what the employee makes and then their health insurance and all that, so... That is account one twelve. Any questions on employee benefits? Debt services. Christina, do you wanna talk on this?
So, debt services is the ones that are paying off our bonds and loans, um, a portion of it, obviously. Uh, I worked with Maggie to get through the parts that we're gonna be owing this next year. Uh, you will see, like on the second page, that's the GO bonds for twenty fifteen, EMA twenty twenty, that's only the portion that the debt service pays for. Uh, and that's going down a little bit because we're paying off stuff. Uh, the third page, you see the fire truck, that's gonna be paid off in this budget of fiscal year twenty-three. So this'll be that last payment that you'll see, and then that one will go away. There'll be another one as well, it's for the splash pad that'll also be going away next year. So, we're paying stuff down real nicely, and the numbers will look really good for this next year.
Any questions?
Department expenditures.
That's tip.
Uh, tip.
So, tip here, um, you'll see in the notes, so, we have Brothers Market, this will actually be the last year for that one as well. They've hit their ten years with us, that we've been giving them their tax rebate.
Twenty-two or twenty-three, so...
Twenty-three, twenty-three, yeah. So I'll do the last one, we've already done, the next line you'll see crossed out the Brothers Market loan, uh, we've already got that one paid off this last year, so that's no longer in there. Then the bond payment is the three hundred eighty thousand for the GO bond, and nine hundred thousand for the sports flex. That payment's in there, and then the splash pad, which again, that won't be going away. Uh, the downtown rehab is in there, and then budget lines was overestimated last year, cause that's all based on evaluation, and we didn't have those yet, so, um, it also goes down ten percent each year, so that's why we're down almost eighteen thousand in that number there for us.
Brothers one will be last, next year?
Be the last one, yeah.
Same with splash pad?
Yes.
What's the downtown rehab?
That is the downtown reinvestment grant that we have, that gets paid through TIP funds. So that's where businesses could apply. And this was all certified in December?
Yes.
So, kind of is what it is on this.
And Maggie confirmed that we, we are on track to get all the funds that we certified and requested.
We have four different areas, one with downtown.
Any question on that? Alright. Uh, local option sales tax. We started out, uh, right around two hundred and fifty thousand is what we were receiving in, and I, we're on pace for three thirty this year, maybe even a little bit higher than that, which is a good thing. Uh, Cedar Rapids passed, um, that, which was a huge boost, that'll mean that for ten years, we'll continue our, uh, getting that checked. For the transfers out, again, I kind of talked about this earlier, thirty-six thousand goes towards streetlights, thirty thousand to insurance, three thousand dollars is budgeted for sauerkraut days fireworks, four thousand for Southeastland after school. Uh, the sports complex, this is the actual payment to, for the ground itself. The one we just talked about, TIP, is the payment on the bond. This is the actual payment for the ground at the sports complex. And there with me here, if you look over on the sheet, I believe this next year, yes, this, this year will be our, and next year's budget will be the final payment for that.
That's from OO-eight on the treasurer's report?
Yeah, so if you look at OO-eight, you can see there's forty-nine purchases, five fifteen left. So that'll be paid off. Uh, I, you'll see I added the cemetery GIS, and then the emergency levy also comes out of here, which, um, is a part of the max levy that we'll talk about later on. We did add five hundred dollars for the Dolly Parton library, John, Imagination Library that John talked about, but it's my understanding you want a thousand for that?
Yeah, our, what our goal was to raise the money we needed for the first five years, but the enrollment, we've been doing such a good job, it's running well ahead, which means it's gonna cost more for the first five years, so, in comparison to what some of the others have been paying in and requesting a thousand.
Good. And you got four thousand for after school still? Yep.
Yes.
So that one sixty-six, nine forty-one, add five hundred to that would be the new number. One sixty-seven, four forty-one, who I get? And you'll see, again, we're taking in three hundred and thirty thousand, so, um, you know, this is, this fund will help us with the sports complex shortfalls, potentially Highway Thirty. Um, our, our usage of lost funds is very, very wide open, there is some, twenty-five percent of it has to be for, to help with budget restraints, lower taxes, which is why, streetlights, insurance, and all this other stuff is in here, so that's part of that, and then, um, we have this other stuff that we, we also put in there, but, um, the rest of the, after the twenty-five percent, it's water sewer infrastructure, and then it says for any other lawful purpose. So, it's pretty far-fetched in what we can use that money for, so, um, it does make things look nice now that, uh, Cedar Rapids passed that, so...
You know when it's up for election, or for enrollment?
Ten years. For us? Ten years. So now we, we match up with that.
Oh, we match up with Cedar Rapids?
Yeah. When we did ours, it was twenty years, I wanna say it was twenty years, and they did it for ten.
Okay.
Or they were off, I don't, I don't, I don't know which one.
So we got another ten years on that?
So we got another ten years, as long as we sign it and they sign it, we share the funds back and forth. So we got another ten years, as long as we sign it and they sign it, we share the funds back and forth, so. Any questions?
Can I do what you want to do with loss? Good. Cap one two, one one.
The top page just shows the revenues in, that's the sex part of. The one, the three thirty-four. Everything else in this is pretty low, zero dollars. There is. The water project, we did put in here for contractual services. So if you look, this whole project was right around two million. So we budgeted four hundred and fifty thousand this year, and then we did the one point five for next year in hopes of getting that done. That's the one we talked about north of town, which includes Washington Street. The new city well. Right now, we have roughly six hundred thousand budgeted, I put another three hundred thousand in there because they thought it was somewhere around a million. Off of that, but that's, we haven't gotten there yet because they're still working with the DNR for placing of that.
Any questions? All right. What do you want to do, do you look to have final?
So that's going to be in our next few items down here. Looking for the public hearing to be on, go. Yeah, the fourteenth of March.
All right, public hearing for maximum proposed property tax levy for fiscal year during the briefing. Need a motion to go to a public hearing. A motion to a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. You can see, this has to be done, the state passed this a few years ago, this has to be passed for our, for our budget to be certified. This starts off with the rate of eight-ten. If you have a rate of eight-ten, you can then use these levies that are down here. And it's best to use those levies because otherwise you're taken away from your tax base, so. Our rate was eight-ten, and then these amounts are filled in based on our needs. The bad part about this is, it shows a rate of nine point seven five two four one. This does not include debt service, so this is why it's not a. Doesn't make sense why they do it this way, but they don't include debt service in there, so it makes it look like the rate's going to be a lot lower than really what it's going to end up being.
Any questions?
All these numbers are populated through the county based on what they come up for property tax.
Any questions? Motion to go out of public hearing?
Motion to go out of public hearing?
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Resolution oh five, twenty twenty-two, approving the maximum property tax level for fiscal year twenty-three.
I make the motion, you just made a motion?
Motion is second to approve the second. Motion is second, Sarah?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Brad? Mike?
Aye.
Nate?
Aye.
Resolution oh four, twenty twenty-two, approving transfers. Christina?
This is mine. So when working with the budget and going through the different funds, and then also working with the auditor. We are, I'm looking to do these transfers to clear up some of the funds, some of these just should have been dug before payments were made. Most of them are for the rebates and the downtown reinvestment program. Others are just clearing up some funds that are deficits from our audit and were suggestions from our auditors, so that way those are taken care of.
Motion?
Motion to make that approve the transfers that need to be made.
Second.
Motion second, Nate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Brad? John?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Set public hearing for fiscal year twenty-three budget.
I'd like to do that for March fourteenth, it's got to be, it used to be the fifteenth it had to be in, but now they've extended it to March thirty-first. So I'd like to have the public hearing on the fourteenth, that would give us time or something. Whenever I would have time to get it installed as well.
Still move. Got a motion to a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
First comments.
I do not have any.
City engineer report, Dave?
Yes, you have a brief update on where we're at with the business dirty overlay. So as you recall, we did attempt to bid this several months ago, didn't get much interest. I've been watching the DOT bid results for Lynn County, or Cedar County, Johnson County, Iowa County. Just checking to see if there are any projects that would be similar to what we're looking to do with a high asphalt quantity. Didn't see anything in September or October. Iowa County had one that was about a one point two million dollar project in November. But it didn't get a lot of interest, had three bidders. The same bidder that we had was low, so it didn't really attract a competitor for them. Nothing in December, we've looked at January, they just bid last week. And there were three projects, one in Cedar, one in Iowa, one in Jones. But once again, not really anything significant, and not much on the docket for February either. So we'll continue to watch, and as soon as we see someone from outside the area that has contained low bidder status on one of these other projects. Then we'll look at trying to get this put out so we have some competition. As far as the water main project and the well, as you're aware, we've applied with Lynn County. They have some ARPA funds that they're distributing about five million this year. And if we're successful with that, that will help with shifting the cost. So we can do maybe a little bit more street work with the bond money and use the ARPA money for the water mains. So we are waiting for the results of that, and once we hear back, we'll be able to move forward with those projects. That's all I have for this evening.
Anybody have questions for Dave?
Thank you, Dave.
Thanks, Dave. Hold it for.
The only thing I got is basically to just go over the budget stuff, and Brandon and I sat down to do this. We didn't ask for much, just because we're trying to get through this year, because Andy said we went through and told you guys there's a lot of stuff getting paid off. So hopefully we can start moving forward again next budget.
I mean, I just, you might not ask for a lot of stuff, I mean, it's just, this is the time to ask for it, because, I mean, it's eight dollars for one. Probably Wilson though, but I mean, if you absolutely need it, I mean, it's better for us to budget it now than later down the road, you know, do budget amendment.
Well, what I was talking about is like the overlay of the bonds that we've talked about in the past. The downtown sidewalks, you know, all that stuff that we've talked about is stuff that's going to get brought back up again in the near future.
Do you remember the goal setting that we had, guys, this last year? Does anybody have, Christina, do you have all that? Could you send us an email and maybe fill these, the new guys in?
Sure.
On what some of our goals are? I just wanted to be reminded of what all was on there to make sure that, because I know there was some big ticket items.
Because I mean, you know, Rick's goals and Mike's goal might be different than what Travis and Cynthia's goals were.
Right, but, but those were kind of goals that we had set as like a five-year type of plan. So I just want to, just kind of bring them up to speed, but.
I see that.
Thank you. But I just want to make sure Travis was covered up, because I know there was some other, I know there was some ticket items that we discussed in there. That I don't, I want to make sure that any goals that we had were met, obviously, or tried to meet those goals. That's the whole purpose of having goals, so.
Anything else, Travis?
Wait, wait, yeah, yes, yes, I'll bring it up. So our lovely newspaper had us on front page with the resident blowing their snow just nice and neat, digging out after this last snowstorm.
Through the street?
Yeah, did you guys all realize that they were blowing it right into the street? Please, 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 people, if we can not blow our snow back out into the street, it'll make cleanup build so much faster.
So I got a question about that. What is, if they blow it in the street, what's it, can you turn around and clean it back up?
Can they, yeah, I mean, I, it's no different than mowing, I mean, I get that, that you're going to get some when you're doing it. But these people aren't cleaning it back up. And you're technically not supposed to.
Cleaning up in the middle of the street and leaving it there is not.
You're not supposed to.
I understand perfectly what you're saying, there's people out there that take their snow over and blow it in the street and put it in the garage. But, on the other hand, there was an incident here last week with a religious organization. That got screamed at. For doing it.
By law enforcement?
No. Police Department.
Got screamed at?
No. I'll talk to you after the meeting about it.
But if you, if you, if you blow your stuff out in the street or put you on the street, it has to go back to the curb.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
No matter where you are, except for downtown, obviously, downtown.
So that's when I said sorry, here.
I see you guys got Jackson Street cleaned up, that looks nice.
Do you want to give them an update on the block center?
Just have.
We'll wait until we sell it.
I'll wait until we sell it.
I would compliment most everybody, because I, I walk a lot of the streets, or on the sidewalks. And for the most part, the people are doing a pretty good job. But remember that if you shovel it, then it becomes icy, or it blows back in, it's still the resident's responsibility to take care of that sidewalk. And the second go around is not as well done. Now I'm just, my own personal walking is coming up with that, so. Be careful, because that ice is really slick.
Any other? Voice director, her, team director.
He is ill, and he denied.
Police Department?
Nothing additional, everyone's in the written report. Any questions?
Hey, what's, for once you're here.
Hi, Mondays are my busy nights, so.
Well, I'm glad you made it.
Well, thank you, thank you, so I've been jumping from meeting to meeting today. So we, I didn't get my decision report out yet, I just finalized all the numbers for December, as well as twenty twenty-one. So we broke seven hundred calls for service this year, which is the first time we've ever done that. We responded to seven hundred and four ambulance calls, standbys, ambulance tiers, inter-facility transfers. We had seven hundred and fourteen requests, so we did turn down, I believe it was six inter-facility transfers. Out of area hospitals, as well as four paramedic tiers with our partners in Cedar and Jones County. Which is pretty phenomenal for our ambulance service, really. No nine-one-one calls were dropped, which is always our priority, is serving the community. So we've got some exciting things coming for twenty twenty-two. We are finalizing our current updated guidelines that our paramedics, EMTs, advanced EMTs all operate under. And as our paramedics are increasing their knowledge, we're actually going to be going to our critical care level service this year as well. Which is pretty cool, we're feeding some of the other services in the area that have been working that way as well. Which is pretty, you know, for me, pretty proud to say for our community.
Absolutely.
And for the service, so. Otherwise, I'll have a more formal year-end report for you, all here in the near future, as well as I'd like to come and do a presentation and an overview for the service. For the community, or for the council members that are newer to the council, so. Guys have any questions?
I don't know if you know it, but, but Brothers is asking for the change for you this year.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's a nice tidy little sum for the high school, I know, this is last year.
Yeah, so that was, was new, Brothers approached me this year, they saw we were doing a letter campaign that was very successful. Gary's had done a roundup as well, and so they approached me and asked to do one as well, and of course, I said, go for it. And they've been awesome to work with, and we're hoping to, like you said, have a nice little sum towards equipment. Make sure that we're still on the front line and have top-notch equipment for our members, so. Thank you.
Any questions for Derek?
Thanks, Derek. Where are you? Uh, nothing fire related. Just an update on the barns, I met with Kurt Winks today. He's still working on the north barn, the furthest north barn, the one he started on. He said that as soon as he can get back in there, when the weather gets a little warmer, he's got some tuck pointing to do. And he can't do that unless it's above freezing, so he's got about two weeks worth of work once he gets that, get back in there. He's right on budget, so that was at least seven thousand for that barn, so. He's also, we kind of talked today, he's got some kind of antique farm stuff that he's going to be willing to put in there. Just some decor for the barn, kind of tie it all together, so look for that in the future, once we get that done.
Is he doing well?
Yeah, he's doing very well, he's getting around pretty good, so. We have, if you've been over by there, we do blow that out, so that way he can get access to that without having to touch into the snow, but. At any rate, as soon as the weather breaks, he can get back in there and keep moving on that. And I had sent Historic Preservation the update on that as well today, I just met with him, so. I did mention earlier about the CDVG grant for the waterline project, this can be combined with what we applied for through Lynn County, which is a bonus. We did have to send out a few more income surveys, they're opening in April, first of April. So Marcia's been working at that, I think she's up to nineteen, I don't know how many, was it thirty?
There's thirty, she needs twenty-seven.
Okay. So, and based on what they have so far, we qualify, so that's also a bit of good news, so. I also talked with YTT in reference to the sports complex. They're still working on the plans, getting those put together at your request. And they're open either at the next meeting or the twenty-eighth of February to give their presentation. Based on what we talked about last time and the Third Avenue option. Also, as a reminder, February sixth is the meeting with the school at six o'clock. Tonight is over at the school. If you have any agenda items.
February seventh.
I'm sorry, seventh. I just looked at my phone and it was not on there. Seventh at six o'clock.
Six o'clock after school.
Yes. If you have.
Lunchroom, or maybe.
Right inside the district doors.
Boardroom, yeah. If you have agenda items you'd like to talk about, I'll make sure that the minutes get sent out of the last one, so that you can see that. We can discuss whatever you want with them that night, if you have anything outside of what is normally discussed, please let me know by the end of the week, so we can get that put together. And that's all I have, if you guys have any questions for me?
Will there be some lunnies left over for the other two barns while we get through?
Yes, so the six, I think sixty-four thousand, five hundred dollars. Seven thousand was for that first barn, and he's right on track to that. I don't know what the middle barn was, it was the most bond money. Southern barn was around seventeen thousand, so he's going to move to that, to the bigger barn next. And just go from there.
And anybody else? Council report, Sarah?
Um, I don't have a whole lot, I wanted to say, awesome job, you guys. Travis, I know that you were out home last Friday night, the fourteenth, and I didn't get home until about two o'clock. And I can tell you that at one point I ran home, there was some drifts, by the time I went back home, the drifts were at bay, it was still windy out. We had an event, and he just kept making sure that everything was cleared, so. And the next morning I woke up, and I had to leave early for another event outside of town, and streets were. and streets were, I, I just thought they did a great job. So kudos to you and your staff, you guys did awesome. And then, that's really about it. Thank you, um, Brandon, for fitting all of our budget stuff into two meetings on Monday nights. That's great, we didn't have to meet additional nights. Welcome, Mike, you weren't here last meeting, so welcome, welcome back, Mike, I guess, maybe, I don't know. Um, and that's.
Might be the same chair, I don't know.
That's all I've got, so.
John?
Thank you to the staff for all their work and the budget, it made it real easy for us to have everything in order and ready for us. I just had one question, are we having much complaints about snowmobiles like we did seven years ago?
We had the one complaint, um, they're riding over at the, uh, nature park, so we did put something out at Facebook.
We haven't had any messages on their site?
Just letting people know, um, the routes and the ordinance and all that. And yeah, I haven't, uh, I haven't seen anybody since. I think some of it is, uh, pretty innocent, you know, that, that appears to be a rural setting and, um, they get on those fields and they end up in there and probably don't want to be there because there's really not much to do there, but, uh, either way, uh, we did put something out to stop it, so. And I did meet with Doug and they were going to, you know, try to stop too if they saw it.
Rick? Mike? Nick?
Um, nothing to add, just reiterate the thank you to the city workers for, um, getting all the, getting everything cleared, keeping the roads as clear as they can be and all the cold and drifting that we've had. Thank the police department. And yeah, the budget is going very, very smoothly, the smoothest I've experienced in nine years, so.
Nice job on that. Is it?
Have we had, Doug, have we had any problems with ours being parked on snow routes?
Uh, we wrote citations on both these snow events. I want to say the first one was thirty violations between the two cities. I couldn't tell you specifically how many in Mount Vernon versus Lisbon, um, last, the second route. So we've been pretty diligent about getting those and then even non, the non-snow routes, trying to tag those that look like they haven't removed in time, different things like that. Been working with Brandon on a few others that, um, we're discussing what to do, the next steps on that. But some of those that we can deal with, we are processing through those. I think usually, like I said, the first time it's kind of, everybody forgets about it, and then they find the twenty-five dollar ticket on their window, and then they remember much better the second time.
And it has been better.
And just so you guys are aware, did some research to some other communities to see how they handle the snow emergency. I know this has been a topic before. Something to at least consider that we kind of all met on, Travis, Doug and I, potentially looking in the future years of going, uh, during a snow emergency, no parking on a curbed street. So if your residence is on a curbed street, potentially making it so they have to get their car into the driveway. Uh, reason being is, um, you can navigate the dump, uh, dump truck up into these developments. I come to a dead end right now, it's impossible to do that. Just something to think about, it was just kind of intriguing when we kind of looked at that. You know, that way, the north end of town, you know, a lot of people parking, like parking, that wouldn't be affected if nothing would change for them. This would be just people that have, um, you know, that have a curb out in front of their house. And I, you know, I can't think of very many, if any at all, that do not have off-street parking, that would be affected by that, but it's something we can definitely look at down the road, but that was just something I wanted to bring up maybe for another, different year down the road.
And, I don't know if you have anything else. So new business, possible. Possible closed session pursuant Iowa Code, section twenty-one point five one high, evaluate the professional competency of the individual employment, hiring, hiring, performance, or discharge as being considered. Unnecessary to prevent delectable injury to that individual's reputation and that individual requests for a closed session. Christina, would you like to go into closed session?
Yes, please.
Motion to go.
Motion to go into closed session.
Second.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Go into closed session.